Development plan for a single-family condominium development. The area being amended is comprised of multiple parcels, all within the Slate Ridge Development, which are located on the northeast corner of US 23 slash Columbus Pike and Home Road. The subject site was originally rezoned in 2014 from Farm Residential District, or FR 1, to the Single Family Planned Residential District, SFPRD. The development plan was most recently amended in 2021 to alter the development plan to allow for the construction of 219 condominium units. The Green Meadows Extension Project does run through a portion of the site, and the residential units are largely split up into two sub-districts, east and west. The land is currently in development and under construction, but no homes have currently been completed. The parcels are surrounded to the north by planned commercial along US 23, Single Family Planned Residential District, as well as FR 1 directly to the north. To the south is planned commercial, as well as some multifamily. To the east is the railroad and some FR 1 parcels, and to the west is road right-of-way, US 23, along with Green Meadows Drive, planned commercial, and FR 1. So there on the screen, you can see the development plan for the Slate Ridge Development. So in terms of the amendment request, there are three discrete amendments to the development plan. So the first one is for the clubhouse and amenities. So the currently approved development plan requires a community clubhouse and a swimming pool. The applicant is requesting this evening to remove the pool from the development plan and replace it with a variety of amenities that can be used at more times throughout the year. The applicant is proposing two pickleball courts, one bocce ball court, an oversized patio with a covered terrace, an outdoor fireplace and grills, dog park, and walking paths with landscaping, in addition to the clubhouse. The clubhouse would be approximately 1,600 square feet, and the architectural style would fit in with the rest of the development. The second amendment request is to modify the combined mailbox unit, or CBU, both in terms of its location and configuration, as well as adjusting the parking layout. So they are requesting to change that parking layout for one of their CBUs, which are required in all new residential developments per the US Postal Service. The new configuration would provide nine off-street parking spaces, as opposed to the previously approved six parking spaces, which were head-on on-street. The proposed parking lot would also contain landscape screening and some lighting. The third amendment request is to just change some language for accessory structures, or accessory non-structures, as they may be, for patios and decks within the development. So this is a reminder, as a condominium development, there are no traditional fee simple lots, so there are no discrete lot lines to have setbacks from. Instead, structure separation is used to specify the minimum distance between the units. The currently approved rear separation requirements vary depending on the lot, and I say "the lot" in quotation marks, the buildable area, but they can vary from 26 to 40 feet, depending on where they are located in the development. The applicant is proposing to add additional language that would say that at grid concrete slabs, paver patios, and fences would be allowed to encroach not more than 10 feet into this rear yard separation. In general, our zoning department is okay with this. Under current practice, this really only changes the setbacks for concrete patios, because paver patios and fences do not fall under the definition of structures per our zoning resolution, so we do not require permits for those, and they can encroach into any setback. In general, we believe that the changes to these amenities would be beneficial to the community, as the clubhouse and amenities would be able to be used more times throughout the year than a swimming pool. The CBU layout also seems to be beneficial, particularly in terms of enhancing traffic flow and traffic safety, as well as aesthetics, and we have no concerns with the modifications to the patio and deck allowances. We do recommend approval of the application. I believe the applicant is on hand, if the trustees have any questions.
Would the applicant like to come up and give a presentation?
Nikki Martin, Pulte Homes of Ohio, 475 Metro Place South, Dublin. Trustees, appreciate your time this evening. Mr. Duffy covered all of the details of our application, although I am happy to answer specific questions if that would be helpful.
What is the reason behind your changing the plan?
Yeah, so, as mentioned, this was previously zoned as part of a larger planned development, the residential sub-area being a portion. As we've gone through detailed design and have begun constructing homes in the community, it's become clear that, specific to our amenities, those could be more well-used throughout the year by our anticipated buyer, is really looking for something that is multi-seasonal. The pool, although nice, is very limiting in that it occupies a lot of land area, so you can only have one amenity, whereas if, you know, we have pickleball and bocce ball and other outdoor activities that have become very popular, we can offer more during more seasons. Specifically regarding the combined mailbox facilities, that is located within Section 1 on the main entry drive, which is Old Castle. The intent there is really to not have people backing into the entry drive and to provide them a place that's off on its own. And then finally, we are constructing single-story patio homes in this community, emphasis on patio being a very important amenity, so making sure that we do have that buildable area and are able to accommodate that kind of lifestyle choice for our residents, so...
Did Pulte own it back a couple years ago, or three years ago, when it was changed from single-family to condos?
We did not own it when it was zoned in 2014. I believe that we had done an amendment in 2020.
In 2021, I guess, yeah, it was amended. So were you involved, was Pulte involved with that?
Pulte was.
And I actually was off for a couple years, so... Robin, do you know if there, I mean, this is somewhat irrelevant, but how many single-family homes there were compared to condos, whatever was approved in 2014?
My understanding is, originally was fee simple lots for single-family homes, I'm not sure of that number.
Okay, so you don't, yeah, was before you were, was it before you were here? Yeah, yeah, okay. And so, so it's not, these amenities are going to cost similar to what a swimming pool would cost?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're not replacing them with something that's less expensive, or?
No, not at all. This is intended to be a highly amenitized lifestyle community, and our intent is really just to provide, you know, the highest quality, most usable amenity we possibly can. Part of that is having that centralized clubhouse where everyone can, you know, connect.
Together, yeah, yeah, I can see that. It looks like it will be nice.
Do you guys have any questions?
I had a couple, do you have any?
I do have.
Okay, so, just getting me familiar with the community, so, and I drove through it the other day, just kind of seeing the streets that were there, you know, because that's really what's there. Went to the little stub of Green Meadows and went into your development. So is the clubhouse over there in, you said one and two, which is one, which one's two?
So, the east side is Section 1, which is where the clubhouse is located, and is accessible via Green Meadows Drive Extension. So that would have been, you drive past those first six lots, and immediately on your right-hand side is the area to construct the amenity.
And then where is the CBU that we're kind of tweaking?
That's in Section 3, which is the west side, and that's on the main entry drive from Home Road, which is Old Castle, and here is Marcus' Road.
Okay, Road G or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so instead of having people back onto the main entrance with head-in spaces, there's a dedicated parking area.
And how, this is again irrelevant, but how much parking is there by the clubhouse? Because it looks like about half of your homes are on that west side with the, you know, kind of a break in between the two developments?
Yeah, so there are 14 spaces total, some head-in spaces, as well as the parking lot.
Okay. When I listened to the zoning commission hearing, I believe the people that live in the village, I don't know if it's the Wensels or who, but they were asking about the trees along the north side.
The landscape clearing, yes.
Yeah, can you speak to the screening?
Yeah, absolutely. So, that remains unaltered with this application, will be installed as was originally approved with the zoning and final development plan.
And there was like trees and screening and that kind of stuff between their properties?
Yep, along the shared property line, and that'll go in with Section 2 when that occurs.
So right now, are the roads only built for Section 1?
Correct.
Gotcha. Is there some, and there's some Section 1 in?
So it's Section 1 and Section 3 that are built right now.
Okay. Which, then, Michelle, can you pull the big one back up? Where's Section 2, then?
Section 2 is going to be immediately north of where you were.
Oh, okay. So is all of the, is this Section 3 the whole thing here on the left side of the screen?
Section, on the left side, that's, 3 is what's built today, if you drive in there.
Okay.
Then there's 4 and 5 over there.
Oh, okay, so there's a number of different sections.
And then 2 is immediately north.
Okay. North of that retention station, yeah, I saw that.
And that's when the landscaping will go in.
Gotcha. Okay. And when do you think the construction will be completed? I know it depends on buyers and all that kind of stuff, like, when do you think it'll be building Section 5 roads and homes and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, so I would anticipate that we would begin Section, well, we will be beginning Section 4 later this year, in terms of beginning to move dirt and cut those roads in. Section 5 would be next year, as would Section 2.
Okay. And has all the tree clearing been completed, for the whole development, or are you doing it section by section?
All of the tree clearing has been completed. If a select tree needed to be removed for a utility, it would be.
Okay, good, just wondering. Oh, and how big are the houses?
So the homes range in size from about 1,900 to 2,000 square feet, up to 3,500 square feet.
Okay. But it is a condo community, so the residents don't, they own the home, but they don't have to take care of the lawn and all that kind of stuff?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Is this development geared towards older people?
It's geared toward active adults, yes.
Okay. And how many bedrooms do the units have?
Two to three.
Three at the most.
Yeah, unless you were to finish a basement and add a bedroom there.
And are they one-story or two-story, or just kind of a mix?
They're all one-stories, unless you have a basement.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no loft or two stories at all?
There's a loft option.
There is a loft.
I don't have any other questions.
Any further questions?
I don't know.
Are there any comments from the audience? Oh, no, on this one, okay. See here, okay, I'll close the hearing, and... Okay. I make a motion to approve Resolution 24-200 to adopt the recommendation of approval of the zoning commission as to rezoning application ZON 2402 of Pulte Homes.
Second?
Trustee Knapp?
Yes.
Trustee Ringel?
Yes.
And Trustee Faust.
Yes.
Give her a free.
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, and next up, we have our second zoning hearing. Okay, I'll open the hearing for rezoning case ZON 2403, Marigold, for the Marigold subdivision. Mr. Duffy, would you like to give your report?
Thank you, Ms. Knapp. So we are here to discuss rezoning case ZON-24-03 for the Marigold subdivision formerly known as Aldea. This is for a total of 40.664 acres, currently zoned single-family planned residential. The request is to amend the currently effective development plan to modify the landscaping plan and to alter the site plan to allow for 120 single-family condominiums and one estate lot on the total property. The four subject parcels are, again, approximately 40 acres that are located at the southwest corner of the roundabout for Lewis Center Road and North Road, as with the last application, the Green Meadows Drive Extension does run to the east of this development. To the north, there is Farm Residential and Single Family Planned Residential District. To the south is the Pulte subdivision that we just heard, as well as some land that is zoned farm residential. To the east are some large lot parcels along Lewis Center Road that are zoned FR 1, as well as the Lewis Center Village, and then to the west also is Farm Residential District, and then the Lewis Center Ravines condo development, which is zoned single-family planned residential. On the next page, you can see the currently approved development plan. So I'll point out that in the northwest corner of the site, there were four estate lots that were originally approved and designed for, and then 117 single-family condo units in the southeast. Then on, just below that, is the proposed amendment, which would alter that layout to include one estate lot instead of four on the northwest portion of the site, and then those three entitled units would move down to the southeast portion of the site. So that would result in no overall change of units, but it's swapping out essentially three estate lots for three smaller single-family homes. The street configuration did slightly change to accommodate for those units, but it has not been significantly altered. You can see some changes in the landscaping around the pond area as well has been changed, I believe due to some final engineering, and the path has been extended around the pond in the updated plans as well. The other portion of the request, which you can see on that plan, is to change the landscaping for the portion along Green Meadows Drive Extension, which was unfortunately altered due to a contractor error. Landscaping plan previously had a tree preservation zone along that frontage, but most of those trees were removed. The applicant is proposing to plant new trees, as well as install mounding in that area to provide screening for the, for the development and help to restore that area of the site. Plans submitted by the applicant indicate that a three-foot to six-foot undulating mound would be constructed, and 70 trees would be planted, as well as several bushes, which would be a mix of deciduous shade trees, small ornamental trees, and evergreen trees. The deciduous shade trees would be planted at a minimum of 2-inch caliper. The small ornamental trees would be planted at a minimum of 1.75-inch caliper, and the evergreen trees would be a minimum of 6 feet in height at planting. Below, you can just see what I already summed up, that the four estate lots were proposed. The three of those entitled units would be moved to Sub Area A, which is the single-family condo portion. So again, it's under the currently approved development plan, and should this amendment be approved, it would both be 121 total units, but this has changed from 117 units in Sub Area A to 120 units in Sub Area A, and then Sub Area B would decrease from four total estate lots down to one. The applicant did also add some language in the development text to ensure that no more than one home can be constructed on Sub Area B. All other development standards would remain unchanged, and only the landscaping and arrangement of the units would be altered under this amendment. We do recommend approval of this application, as the amendment would rectify the landscaping issues along the Green Meadows Extension, as the original approved plan essentially can no longer be fulfilled. And again, shifting three units from Sub Area A to Sub Area B would likely reduce the natural area of the overall site to be disturbed without increasing the overall unit count of the combined sub-areas. So we do recommend approval of this application. One thing I think that I forgot to include in my staff report is that the trees that are on the Sub Area B portion have been added into the tree preservation zone by the applicant, so that that existing tree line would remain.
Which one?
So, I think...
It's basically where the road was going to come between the, like, the state lots, say 2, 3, and 4, and we've asked that they make that, rather than taking any trees down to build a road that isn't necessary, since there wouldn't be no homes there. We've, it was like two separate ones, and now it's all one. I think you can s...
Yeah, it's in, I'm trying to find the, the submental.
Okay.
Michelle, can you go to page 68 in the revised submental, please?
So that's right along Lewis Center Road, and it used to be basically two, and now it's one, genuinely. Oh, boy. I loved to imagine.
So it's, again, in that northwest portion of the site, it's the darker gray area. All those trees have been added as a tree preservation zone.
They weren't in there before?
It was two, it was like, this is like one giant, like, backwards C. That one before was like a rectangle and a rectangle, and then we also added additional, asked her to add additional language to make sure that property along, the trees along the east and the south part of that estate lot are also in that preservation zone.
Correct, so the, there was, the tree preservation area existed previously along the Lewis Center Road frontage, but because some of the estate lots would have encroached on that area.
Oh, okay, on some of the trees, okay. So those are the parts that have been added back in?
Correct.
Right, because I, yeah, I thought the area along South Old State was mostly covered, okay, I mean, along Lewis Center Road.
All right, and that concludes my staff report. I have nothing further. The applicant is on hand, if she would like to make a presentation, and if the board has any questions.
Annie Richardson with Onyx and East, at 243 Monmouth Fifth Street. Robin really covered most of what this application consists of. I am happy to answer any questions.
Robin, does the language say that the trees that are going to be planted will be preserved in their, in perpetuity and replace if they are, if they die? The landscaping on the east side of, the west side of Green Meadows, the east side of the development?
I would have to look at the exact language. Generally, when there, when landscaping is required per a landscaping plan, then yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm, I, I do appreciate the fact that you took out the estate lots, and so the residents will be able to use that area, is that correct?
So, the new, the way that it's set up currently is it's one estate lot, and it's one single parcel. So the person who will live in that home, that will be a 10-acre parcel for them to enjoy. So that's a single-family home, in single-family.
But, okay, so currently, do they, what property do they own currently?
Who?
The people that own the house, or do you own the whole property now?
So, the whole property was replatted to include one single estate lot in the northwest corner. That estate lot is 10 acres and was sold to a single-family, or a single-family user who is planning to live there with their family.
Oh, so they get, when did that happen?
That happened in, within the last month.
Oh, okay, I thought that, did you know that, Erica?
I was aware of that, yes.
Okay, I thought that was going to be used, because wasn't that used as, well, it was going to be three lots before, anyway, right?
Yeah, so it was never, it was never included as an open space calculation for us, even in the original, because they were planned to be single-family homes.
Okay.
So nothing has changed on that.
Yeah, nothing's changed. I, when I first saw, or up until just now, I thought it was going to be some open space for...
Yeah, yeah.
But now you won't need to construct anything over the streams, right?
Nothing.
So that will save a lot of money.
Yep. Well, nothing will be constructed, as the trees will remain the same. And, and to be truthful, you know, the common access drive that was originally planned for the estate lots, there wasn't a lot of appetite for that from a county perspective, adding another curb cut on Lewis Center, and so this is really just preserving what exists now, and, and nothing will change.
Okay, that's good.
What's the acreage, what was the acreage of that brick home that's there? Like, what was their property size before, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I know it was quite a bit less. I want to say it was four or five acres.
Okay.
Yeah. There, there were two lots up there, by a mother and a son, so in combination, it's close to the 10 acres that it was before.
Okay. So they are aware that they can't split that, right?
Absolutely.
It's restricted?
Yep. There was a memorandum that was signed at closing to make sure that they were aware there's only one home that would be allowed there.
Great, okay, good. And I'm, so I'm, I appreciate your efforts to supplement what, all the trees that were destroyed, but there was a render, so there was a rendering that was sent to us, it was kind of like a, you know, the one with all the, I don't know when this was?
The industry?
Huh?
The, the example images?
Yeah, with the mound and the sun and the, all that stuff. Is it going to look like that when it's planted?
Yes, that's the goal, would be for it to mimic what the images are that are on that sheet. The goal would be to keep it as natural as possible. We were really hoping not to construct one giant mound with just some trees on top. We tried to make it more interesting and able to be used by our residents as well, so that mode path will connect into our multi-use path, and so residents can, can meander through the mountains and really use it.
But are the trees, the trees are only eight to 10 feet tall, is that correct?
When planting, when planting.
When planted?
Yes.
So, it will, it will look like, I mean, it's hard to see, because the tops of the trees aren't shown, but I want to make sure that's going to actually look like it does in these, in these images, and the trees aren't going to be any smaller.
Yes, so, I think, just to clarify on that, the trees, the evergreen trees that are there do have a height on them, because industry standard is that's how they're measured. With the deciduous trees, it's a little bit tougher to estimate exact height, because they're classified by their caliber instead. And so, the, what, the trees that we've chosen to put in here are 2 inches and 1.75, which, according to all of our landscape architects that have taken a look, are really sturdy trees, because we wanted to make sure that they weren't going to be just tall and skinny, but they are going to be, you know, between 6 to 8 feet tall at the beginning, but the... they will grow quite a bit larger because of the large caliber that they are.
Yeah, they do actually look like quality trees, that, that species are high quality. But if, if you look at how it used to look, remember? This is how it used to look, for anyone that missed it. So, and this was not just for the residents that live near, it was for everybody to enjoy. And I, I want, I want to make sure that the view is going to be blocked very close to what it was before. I mean, I know it's not possible, but this, this has to be a million dollars' worth of trees. I mean, I don't know, you can't, I can't ask you to replace a million-dollar worth of trees, but, um, is it possible to make those trees, like, three inches?
So, in the way that we are planting them, it's actually pretty difficult to get larger trees without some substantial effort that goes into that. And so these trees are something that we can, are commercially available, that we can purchase. Outside of that, it gets, it gets a little bit difficult for us to be able to source larger trees. And to be able to make sure that they're gonna be sturdy enough and, and grow well at that point.
But you think it will look like this, what, what you submitted? Do you remember this?
Yeah.
Do you remember this picture? This is the one, I mean, this is, this to me is decent. I mean, this, remember what, whatever, I don't know when they submitted that, it was, there were so many submittals on this.
Yeah.
This, to me, if it looked like this, it would be adequate, but a lot of times, people will show this image, and then what ends up getting planted, I mean, obviously won't have grass instantly, but, you know, whatever ends up, it, it won't look like this for years. I wanna make sure it would look like this pretty, pretty-
Yeah, I can't promise you that day one, that it's gonna look like the mature trees that are in that, in that image, but, you know, we are, what we believe in putting our best effort into getting the largest trees that we can, are commercially available to us for this project. And I will say, too, that the trees that were picked out, were picked out very meticulously to make sure that we're creating interest and color and also screening as well. And so the way that they're placed on that plan was, was not haphazardly. It was definitely, it was definitely looked over and planned.
I just wanna make sure it's gonna at least closely match that, because like, I mean, that, this looks decent, but I, I just worry. And do you know how many, there's seventy trees, do you know how many bushes there are?
Uh, I do not know how many-
Does anybody know?
...count of the bushes.
There's a lot.
Bushes are probably kinda like stars.
Frankly, I did not count them, because they were a lot.
There's so many, right?
There were seventy trees.
Yeah, it was quite a bit.
But it should give a good visual, it should help to visually-
Absolutely. And there was a tree that was added to each of the, the homes that faced east along that new planting plan. There was a tree that was added in each of the front yards as well of those.
Oh, good, okay.
Because their front yard, their front door faces Green Meadows, correct?
Right, and, and keep in mind, too, there, there is still a hundred foot set back between Green Meadows and where those homes are, so it, yes, there's a lot of planting, but there's also quite a bit of distance.
Okay, and you will commit to maintaining that entire section and replacing anything that dies?
Yes, we will, we will commit to doing it.
Yeah, and Ms. Knapp, to that point, to your earlier question, there is language that all such landscaping shall be maintained and kept in accordance with the landscape plan as submitted.
It doesn't say anything in there that, specifically that dead trees or plantings will be replaced?
No, it does not specifically say.
I'd like to add that language in, if it's okay. If it's implied, then we might as well put it, make it explicit, just to make, 'cause I mean, these are nice trees, I wanna make sure they don't die. And, and did you say that you, your company plans to maintain ownership of the entire property, is that correct?
I, I can't speak for anything that's past, you know, my, my position here, but I will say we are planning to own and maintain it, at least as we're leasing up and, and after the community is built.
So it would be, the language would state the owner of the property, not the developer, but maybe we could take a break and write some language up?
For the, the, to replace the dead trees?
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't know if something later-
Yeah, I can work with Robin on that. Yeah, we, we would even be willing to, you know, if you're willing to have us work with staff to figure out that language, we're happy to do that as well.
Okay. Do you guys have more questions?
I wanna go back to the tree preservation area that we talked about along Lewis Center Road. So in the lot that was conveyed, was the tree preservation in SubArea B included as a deed restriction?
It was not included as a deed restriction, but was agreed upon by the, by the owners. So, you know, it, this zoning will go with the, with the land, so it doesn't necessarily go with us as the owners when we transfer it.
Yeah, I was wondering that myself.
Yeah, so the owners could cut trees down.
Yeah.
I think at that point, though, would it be a zoning violation?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, we would not approve any homes to be constructed on that.
Right, but I think the concern that, this is, I think, what Trustee Knapp was talking about as well, is that we had a tree preservation originally-
Yes, that would be, that would be a zoning violation.
-that was not preserved, and we wanna make sure that any future tree preservation areas are preserved.
Yes.
And, so is it in the, so it's not in the deed restrictions either, that it cannot be subdivided, correct? It's just in a memo, memorandum of understanding?
Uh, correct. I think it could, in theory, be subdivided, but nothing could be built.
Right, 'cause we would have to prove that, yeah.
So, there's-
Then it would have to come to us, right?
Yeah, for the approval, yeah, just wanna make sure.
Yeah, so I think, you know, anyone could subdivide their land.
So if they, do we have a tree inventory on those trees?
I wouldn't think so.
No. So how would we enforce that zoning? I guess it would be, do the owner, the owners know that?
Yes, they're aware, yes.
Is the tree preservation area built in the memorandum of understanding?
Um, it is not, but they, the memorandum of understanding explains that we're going through the zoning process, and they, we've written approval of, of them seeing the plan and agreeing to it.
Doesn't seem really binding, or that, how can we make, how can we make sure that they know for sure they can't cut down trees and that the penalty would, 'cause they would be responsible for replacing all those trees.
Could we work with staff to make sure there's some agreement, or some, or there's a, a sign-off on the plan that's been shown?
Maybe we could, after we hear public comment, maybe we could take a little break and figure something out on that and the trees.
Yeah, I mean, the zoning can call out a tree preservation area, but as far as making it anything more than that-
Yeah, we, yeah, zoning can't enforce something beyond zoning.
Yeah, I can't, like, put an easement in place, or-
But then, yeah, I just wanna make sure they know they can't cut down those trees, and they're aware of it, but-
Well, they, they're aware that there is a tree preservation area-
They are.
-that they should not cut down trees.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's, I think, the extent of the enforcement that we currently have on that.
And is it too late to add a deed restriction, because closing has happened?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, okay, we'll think about that for a sec. Do you have more questions?
I do not.
Oh, did the dog park move? Was it on, like, the south?
It moved slightly.
Because of those couple houses?
Yeah, and, and the pond, due to final engineering, was moved a little bit, and so it just made more sense grading-wise for us to move it up.
Okay.
The size has not changed, and the number of plantings around it has not changed.
Okay. All right, those are my questions, yes.
Where's the dog park now?
It's on the northeast corner of the pond before it was in the southeast.
It was, yeah. Was it the same size?
Yes, same size, same plantings. Just a little bit better of a location, to be quite honest.
Okay, all right. Any more questions? All right, I'll ask if there's any comments from the public? If you would like to come up and give your name and address?
Yeah, come on up and let us know your name and address, please.
My name is Charlene Lockwood. I live at four sixty-five Valley Miss Crossing in Lewis Center. I did sign in, so you have the address. I may be asking something that you already discussed, because I couldn't hear a word you said. And I have my hearing aid.
Sorry.
Um, is this on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. My first question is, my husband and I came when you began the process of vetting this project, and we listened to everything, and everybody was saying the density and all of that, and we thought, hey, it's progress, you move forward. And at the time, I thought the project said there would be like something of a hundred-and-fifty condo home buildings, whatever. I counted the lots on this map, and I may be off one or two, 'cause I was using my little finger. I got to one thirty-one. Now they're saying a hundred-and-twenty lots on the three, or a hundred-and-twenty homes on the three estate lots, plus the one thirty-one, so there'd be two-hundred-and-fifty homes?
There should only be a hundred-and-twenty in the, of the homes that are close together, and that estate lot, this is what, one of the things we're doing with this revised application is turning it from, it was four estate lots, now to just to one estate lot.
Right. Well, when we first came, one of the people here, and I do not remember which one, was very clear about you will have four estate lots that will help cover the density of the number of people. Now we're down to one estate lot, plus a hundred-and-twenty more homes. Am I, am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
On the three lots, there will be a hundred-and-twenty more buildings?
No, 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 no. Only on this southeast section is a hundred-and-twenty, and there is just one up here in the northwest section along Lewis Center Road.
Well, where's the original?
So the original, we had four up along Lewis Center Road, and then a hundred-and-seventeen in the southeast area.
Okay.
So the whole development still only has a hundred-and-twenty-one homes.
Okay.
We just went from a hundred-and-seventeen of our rental homes to a hundred-and-twenty rental homes, and then we went from four in the estate lots. We lost those three, and that's, they went down there, so now it's just one. But the whole acreage of the development is still the same, or the property that they had owned is still the same.
And we addressed this with you when you came in earlier. I find it ironic that the builder can use a miscommunication to take out trees, when there are trees in the way of Green Meadow Boulevard that are holding up the roadway. And it, it's just ironic to me that one person can go and bulldoze out Mother Nature while the rest of us respect it. I love trees. I don't wanna see them taken down, but I want to see Green Meadow Boulevard finished, so that the traffic that is coming up Lewis Center Road moves to home and Green Meadow, you know, 'cause we're, the traffic right now is unbelievable. And when this was first started, they said, well, Green Meadow Boulevard will be finished, and the majority of the construction traffic will be going home to Green Meadow, not down Lewis Center. What happened to that?
Michelle, do you, when is the expected-
I know it's a different entity.
Yeah, it is, different entities, yeah. You have an update? Yeah, you wanna come back to the mic? It captures it on YouTube.
I'm gonna stand here so I can hear what she says.
Yes, she talks very quietly.
Sorry, it's my nature. So, according to the county, so your point about the trees, if everyone's familiar with the Indiana bats, they're a protected species, and so in central Ohio, there's a tree clearing window that you can clear trees in. So that is from September thirtieth to March thirty-first. And so the, the road construction is being held up, yes, right now, because we're outside of the tree clearing window, and so they were not able to clear by that point.
There was a permit, an EPA permit or something, what was, tell us about that.
So there, so that was step one. There was potential that there was a bat study that was going to happen, and in that case you can clear outside of the tree clearing window, but there is a, an EPA permit that is holding up the construction, that is anticipated that they will get it by the beginning of September. After that permit, they have that permit in hand, they're anticipating that it'll take six weeks to complete the rest of the connection, connection. And we have an agreement that it is, they will use their commercially best efforts to have it done by December thirty-first.
And then when will we start to see, like, intense construction traffic in the development?
In our development?
Yeah.
So we plan to break ground in July. That will be all site work for a good six months through the end of the year. At that point, in early spring, we'll plan to go vertical with construction.
And you don't have basements, so, but we will be, will you be laying your, your foundations? Like, so we're seeing concrete trucks, then?
We, you know, winter is a little tough.
Yeah.
So depending on the weather, we would expect probably in March to be doing foundations.
Okay.
So, we have a, there's a good runway of site work that needs to be finished.
And that, to those of us who aren't in the construction, well, that's streets and that, getting the streets ready.
That's streets and infrastructure, that is, there's a very large water main that has to be run down the Green Meadows extension, so we're responsible for completing that. So it's, it's all the utility, utility work, and then streets that'll happen first.
All of which was supposed to be done before the work began. Yes, that was said at the very first meeting.
Yeah, that's a county-
It was probably in the sky.
Well, and the, the county engineer, that, they're in charge of that, actually, but that was one of the main, one of the reasons that helped us approve it, is that we thought that that road would be done.
And we thought it would be as well. That is, the county has pushed us and pushed us.
Can they pour roads in December? Can you pour roads, so I don't-
Depends on the freeze.
I wanna make sure they're, I mean, because if they can't get it done, when, when is the, is it, I thought it was early October that they could start clearing again for the bats.
Oh, yeah, October one, you can start clearing.
Yeah, October one is the beginning, so they, their goal, they've told us, is that they will clear trees on October one. We should be able, you should be able to pour streets through December.
We were doing, they were doing Bell Canyon at that time.
I don't know if they just clear the trees for a few days, and then all of a sudden start putting the road down. Like, I don't know how quickly it works, and I'm starting to get a little skeptical that they would be able to, I mean, hopefully they would, but-
To add a, a little bit of help there is that our site contractor is the same contractor that's doing the road work for the county, so that does help a little bit with the coordination and making sure that we're not building on top of each other. And they're also the ones that have shared a lot of the information about the road, so.
I think that two key things for the road and the density, the number of housing units. And the number of housing units will not go above one fifty?
It will not go above one twenty-one.
And that includes the estate lot?
One hundred-and-twenty-one.
One, yeah, one twenty of the-
I will count them.
We'll count them during the break, yeah, I will.
You did an assurance of that, because there were the four lots that were gonna be nice and big, and now there's one.
Now there's one e, bigger lot, is what it is. So rather than four two-and-a-half acre-ish lots, there's one ten-acre lot.
One bigger one.
Yeah.
And that preserves that whole area along South Old, or along, gosh, Lewis Center Road?
That was Lewis Center.
Yeah, because before they were gonna have to make a, a curb cut and have a road go back there, and then, and so that was gonna take out trees, and so now that was what-
The entrance exit that was-
Correct, for those three homes.
Yeah, and so now, at least, that was a big key, actually, it's the only reason I approved that, is because of the two tree preservation areas, which is why, I mean, I, Erica and I, we, we, we can meet separately with applicants and, and tell them what we'd like, and we all spent, I, I don't know how many hours with them, trying, telling them, and once they agreed to preserve the trees, is that is the only reason why, so I was, it was really a shame when all the trees came down, obviously, but now at least along Lewis Center Road, it will be preserved, and it won't look like-
The exit.
Yeah, like, my, I wanted to prevent it looking like some subdivisions further to the east, where they're just house upon house right up against the road. I kinda wanted to preserve that, that kinda rural kinda look, so that, that at least will be, will remain there. So, yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Very sure.
Thank you for coming.
It was a very small, very small, you know, you don't want. Okay. Thank you, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and again, I mean, I think it's a third or fourth time since I've been a trustee that on a Friday, someone has called and said someone's chopping all the trees down, and by the time we get there, I, I don't know how it happened so fast, or why no one notices, but it's always on a Friday, when everything's closing, so, um-
Yep.
That's a real shame that, that happened, 'cause it was very, it was really beautiful.
It was beautiful, and, and also was hoped to be amenity for our residents as well.
Yeah, I mean, everyone, I mean, most people like trees. I, I'm also a tree lover, obviously, so, everyone knows that, um, so-
But thank you for putting it in the multi-use path.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Multi-use path, and it connects into our own multi-use path that goes through the-[1730.91] Multi-use path, and it connects into our own multi-use path that goes through the-
A lot of people are looking forward to that, too. So, do you want to take a little recess?
Well, I just, Robin and I were able to pull how we've used, how we've addressed that issue in other applications. So, we have the language dead trees, shrubs, and other landscaping material required by the approved landscaping plans shall be promptly removed, and when required, shall be replaced within six months. That's our standard language, so I can add that as a condition to the approval.
And, um-
That, that's a, that works?
That works.
Okay.
Okay, good. And I would like to take just a five-minute break real quick to check on a couple of things. All right? Okay, sure.
Sorry. Let me, let me get some-
Okay, okay, we're coming back to session. Okay, um, so, there are a few issues. We want to make sure that the tree preservation zone is enforced in perpetuity. And you, you have some language that you pulled up from-
I just had a question. Is that, is it anticipated that tree preservation areas will be on the plat during the subdivision process?
We hadn't intended for that, but we would agree to doing that. Yeah.
Okay. Because that's the opportunity to have those type of easements or preservation areas.
That's a great-
Dedicated to that.
And then, they will receive a copy of the plat, the property owner?
Yeah, another question that, that we were, that was brought up is, is there a way to have the property owner sign some type of acknowledgement that he understands, they understand?
So, just to note, they will have to sign the plat. So, they're aware that, because they're the owners of that property-
Oh, that's true, yeah.
They'll have to sign off on it.
So, if the tree preservation area is on the plat, that property owner has to sign and agree to it.
Okay. And are, so there are deed restrictions on this property, or there will be? Are there? Are there any?
I mean, any that currently exist, but nothing that we are planning to put-
Nothing, you're not doing deed restrictions because you own the whole property. Are we a single owner?
Correct, yes. We own the entire subarea A. And so, we don't, we wouldn't have a need to put deed restrictions.
Yeah, deed restrictions on it. Okay. And then, but the, the owner of the estate lot will not have deed restrictions either. They'll just have the plat? But is the plat permanent, can be changed?
They, they'd have to go through the re-subdivision process, re-subdiving process.
Orange Township would have to sign off on it.
Do we have to sign up for a plat?
Yes.
Yeah, this, it would have to be zoning approved.
So, we, so they can't ask for the plat to be changed?
So, if they tried to subdivide it without the tree preservation area, it would be in violation of the zoning for that develop, for that develop, that area.
Right, it's important, okay. I'm not as familiar with the plating process as the zoning process. Okay, so, do you guys feel comfortable that that, that putting in the plat will cover us?
Yep.
Okay. And then, you said you were going to look up some language about dead or diseased trees.
Yeah, so, if you were comfortable with that language that I shared earlier, that's what we've used in the past.
Okay, okay, good.
And then, as far as, I mean, we can probably move forward if we just make the second modification. Trying to think of language for that.
I mean, we could hold off on our decision until July 15.
Similar to what we do with JEDs that the developer property owner agrees to include the tree preservation area on the plat for the subdivision.
Yeah. It could, would, when is our next, actually, we could do it on-
I mean, I think that, that should suffice, those two conditions.
I think we, I think we can just knock that out right now.
You think so? Okay.
Yeah.
So, it would be, um, the language that Mike just said, and the, we're going to add that language about the tree preservation, or the, so just those two items.
Yeah. Robin's typing it, so then I'll read it.
We love technology.
Okay, so, all the tree preservation zones, though, right?
Yeah, I got that.
Yeah. So, the tree preservation zones shall be shown on any plat that includes the subject properties recorded within Delaware County.
Okay. And then, we're going to add the lang, the other language that you wrote about the-
Yes. And then, the other condition is dead trees, shrubs, and other landscaping material required by the approved landscaping plans shall be properly, promptly removed, and when required, shall be replaced within six months.
And then, when required mean?
So, for example, if, if there's a tree or a bush or something that's already existing that dies, then it doesn't necessarily have to be replaced. It's just the landscaping that is required to be installed would have to be replaced.
Wait, oh, wait.
But then, that's covered by the tree preservation.
Okay. All right, so we got it. Wait, say it one more time.
Dead trees, shrubs, and other landscaping material required by the approved landscaping plans shall be promptly removed, and when required, shall be replaced within six months.
Okay. Do we need to say including in the tree preservation zone?
This counts for everything that's part of the landscaping plan.
So, the tree preservation zone is in the landscaping?
Oh, yeah.
Plan? That is part of the landscaping plan? Okay, so, everything. All right. Okay, so, are there more questions or comments? Okay, so, those are the two conditions.
I just want to note one more time. So, the, on the drawing that we have up on the screen, if you don't mind zooming out real quick. When we're speaking about tree preservation zone, that includes subarea B, what is called out. And then, are you all including a new, what's not shown on here, which is a new tree preservation zone along Green Meadows? That was-
I would say everything in the gray is a tree preservation zone, correct?
Currently, it's not called out, is that? Currently, what's called out is the dark gray area. And then, what, the note on here is that trees will be preserved to the greatest extent possible.
In the bubble area where it says tree quarter setback.
Wait, where? So, it's not?
Do we have the tree preservation areas listed on the original plan that was approved?
Yes, but they were only along Green Meadows, and there were two chunks along Lewis Center. So, the bulk of it, where it's kind of like almost a diagonal gray line across the page there.
Where were the two chunks along Lewis Center, then?
It's, right now, it's one continuous like rectangle along Lewis Center, except with the backwards C. It was just the, it was just the parts along Lewis Center.
So, wasn't the rest of it?
So, the part north of the northeast pond on the plat was in a tree preservation area previously?
Over by Green Meadows?
No, it was not.
Yeah, the only sections were the two, the 100-foot setback, and then on subarea B.
Okay.
And then noted that trees will remain to the greatest extent possible, of which what was cleared currently is just to the grading limits, and we don't intend to clear anything beyond that.
So, but also, all the clearing has been done?
Yes, absolutely. Unless there's any sort of change, you know, that we find in construction that there's something that needs to be regraded, but we don't anticipate that.
But you're not taking, because the pond has already, has the pond been started at the north-
That one had.
Northeast corner. So, you've already taken down any trees? Because I know, I wanted them to keep those trees, but then they weren't sure how the pond was going, remember that? They weren't sure.
Yep, yep.
Oh, that's right. Okay, so the part, yeah, that's right, the part in the middle is not in the landscaping plan?
So, it is in the landscaping plan. It's just not in a preservation, dedicated preservation area.
I think we're looking at the landscaping plan, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, it's noted there, intended to be kept. In any clearing that's done, it's, is what we intend to do in the long run.
So, the darker gray is the, what we'll see on the plat?
Mm-hmm. Yep, that's what I'm, yep.
And because the trees along Green Meadows are new, they're, that's why we're not, it's not a preservation zone. It's just part of the landscaping.
Which will be replaced if any, due to the language.
And the tree preservation, okay.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Nope.
So, as far as the resolution, I would read off of the bottom of page four on the template.
Okay. I make a motion to approve Resolution 24-201 to adopt the recommendation of approval of the zoning commission as to zoning application ZON 2403 of Onyx and East with the two modifications that Ms. Bonnie read.
Second?
Trustee Knapp?
Yes.
Trustee Fels?
Yes.
And Trustee Ringel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, you're approved.
I didn't even say it, but earlier, but thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Remember to name all the streets after us. Nappy, I'm still waiting for Nappy.
Particularly nice tree, Trustee Knapp.
I'm waiting for Nappy and Way with a K. I've been waiting for 23 years for a name, okay. Lisa Lane. Okay, just kidding. Oh, man, I already asked you-
Are they all flower names? If it's married?
Oh, that's great. That'll be fun.
Well, should we adjourn?
We got to close the hearing.
Do I just adjourn it? Wait, okay.
Yeah, it's just a motion to adjourn.
Oh, do I, do a call roll? No. Okay, motion to adjourn.
All right.
We have a lot of checks to sign, so don't.
Does anyone have to second that?
Nope.
Okay, all right.